Uh.
The place to fly.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two minutes, September fifteenth.
Seconds.
Motion and second, any further discussion, Charlie?
Yeah, on page three. Ms. Lynch became Mr. Lynch.
What?
And I don't think she would like.
My pronoun is still waiting.
Number fourteen.
Yeah.
I'm technically Mrs. Lynch. I mean, I am hitched, so.
Sorry.
So do we want you to amend that more?
I amend that we.
Hasn't been voted on.
I, I, will you change or not change, I don't.
Friendly amendment.
What's that?
It's a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment to number fourteen, changing Mr. Lynch to Ms. Lynch, as I am in. Second.
It's not motion and second.
Second, me lady.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Members reports, Charlie?
No.
Right. I went to the legal update from a law firm, the representatives Jensen Bayor down in Portland, South Portland. It was very productive as it usually is. It's the every other year. One of the things that came out of that is the need to revise our employment applications. The ban the box legislation has reached Maine, which is the can't ask about criminal records upon initial application. That's one of those things that has to wait. So we've already done that. And there are a few other things in house just for compliance that we're going to be moving along. But we have already updated our employment applications. But that's going to be just like anything else. You have to wait until the last minute to be able to make the offer. Then you can run the background, ask about criminal and things like that. So can't be exclusionary from the start. You have to make the offer first.
But then can you fire it? How does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right. The office rescinded. Yeah. So anyway, so that's just another little bump in the road. But whatever, we've adjusted and we're fine. Now, I was scheduled to update software systems next week. They're going to be web based, not server based. So that should be a good thing for us. And it's going to require us to close at twelve thirty on Wednesday. So our schedule next week's going to be a little choppy, but nonetheless. And then after that, for the next couple few weeks, we're going to be thankful for everybody and their patience as we try to get used to the new system. So a little patience there. Absentee ballots for November second. We've got both local and state here. Also, we're going to push this out starting next week. But because it's at the school, masks are going to be required. So for those folks that are going to be resistant to wearing masks, the sheriff, sheriff's deputy is going to kindly deny you access to the building. So we're encouraging folks that are going to have problems masking, come into the gymnasium. We're asking them to vote absentee if that's their pleasure. So. Yeah, we will. And then the. Yeah, so we're seeing a spike in turnout just this week because people are now realizing that we've got the local option on the local ballot. And then it's the CMP question, and that's driving an exponential number of requests just this week. So we'll see how that plays out. The AWAS system out to the airport is now complete, that the transition there. That's what put the weather on a separate frequency from the primary frequency. And the pilots have been looking for this for a long time now. And so Liflight was able to finish that up for us. That was an investment one hour end of a little over three thousand. But that should create safer airspace out there. Cemetery Committee is continuing its work. They're going to meet on Saturday to tour cemeteries, do an inventory in terms of maintenance and things like that, as well as future needs. And then they're going to work to develop a budget, short term and long term in terms of maintenance, to put a proposal to you folks this fall. The planning board is going to meet next week to conduct the final review of the final plan for the Red Barn Road subdivision. That seems to be coming along pretty well and haven't had negative feedback on that since the first. And it wasn't even negative. It was just a lot of question there. So I would expect that that would go through, but you never know. That's also going to have a public hearing built into it, which is required by the ordinance. I've reached out to a couple vendors in terms of dock options for Rusal Park, the actual docks themselves and the layout. I kind of had in my mind what I thought we would want. I've had two firms that, you know, because of the raising and lowering of water levels, can't just be like a shore master for a swim area like that. So they've worked all four municipalities in and around Central Maine. One of them worked City of Augusta, one of them worked town of Waltham. And so we're going to see what they have for proposals. The other thing is I put in a request for buoy pricing because of the swim area, it has to have those formal buoys and it has to have the ropes as well with the certain color buoys in between periodically. So I've submitted a request for that as well. So we're going to see what the actual cost of it is to pull that together.
They understand the flow of the water and how many things can fit. That's obviously different than stationary water, like a pond or a lake or something like that. We have a lot of stuff that can crash into it, move it, crank it and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, so the other thing that we've got is that it's not a terribly deep freeze on a river. You get the freeze, but it's not going to be deep like it would be on a lake. And there's nothing more that you're going to have for damage than thick ice on the lake when it's all moving and shifting. And you do see them sheared off, but we're going to get those state style buoys if we're going to move ahead with it. It's going to be from their vendor. That's where I got the information from. Their vendor and their quality and the weight in the coated cable and things like that. Those are all, we're going to do it.
Over the winter will pull those.
Those will probably stay the winter. As navigationalists, yeah. The ropes in between need to be renewed. I mean theoretically, we could, but it's a lot of task and then you're going to have, you still going to have to have something there to hold the chain up off the bottom. Unless you're going to dive to the bottom and then your chain or cable is going to end up on the bottom, wearing away. So typically they leave them there. They go underwater, you know, the bottom of it's probably three feet under water. Anyway, so we'll get more together on that, hopefully in good time. Mema is offering a training next week. It's remote, but nonetheless, something that we've had to deal with in the last few years and that's sheltering. They're also going to spend about half of it specific to COVID and the social distancing and those kind of accommodations that we would have to have in the event that we had to open up a shelter situation. Reading to Fairview has agreed to come to us on election day in the school gym to offer a flu clinic as well as a COVID clinic. It was just one of those opportunities when I said, I mean, we've had people here, but when am I going to go get my flu shot? People talking about delays in their doctor's appointments. People are out two, three months getting doctor's appointments. And so they said they'd come and set up in the corner of the gym and offer that there. So we're finalizing some details in terms of if you're not insured, what the cost would be. But pretty much if you have any level of insurance, it would be free and you could take one, the other or both. So they're ironing out some of those details. It would be from ten to six. So if nothing else, it's just an opportunity for them to get some exposure and then for us to have convenience. We won't have any residency requirements or anything like that. Taxes were due on the twenty first, so interest is now accruing. Where, you know, there's only so much that we can do in terms of throwing a nickel here and a nickel there. So you're starting to see now those three and four dollar balances. You didn't request a receipt, name's going to be in the book if you didn't account for interest. But we are very strong collection rate on both, largely attributed to the influx of payments that folks have received over the last year, whether it was prepayments on their accounts or just putting it aside. So eighty six point nine as well ahead where we were last year. And your personal property, we've really got like five hundred dollars that's left outstanding. And then we were finally able to process the paperwork. We had a bunch of issues with the tax exemption and whatnot and to move that two and a half million over and actually invest. So we moved the two and a half million over last week and then it finally went into investment yesterday. So we'll keep an eye on that. The FEMA grant that. They'll flip phone. The FEMA assistance to firefighting grants that we went in for air packs. The fire department was not successful. Evidently, we were close. Fire officers are working with a consultant to refine that and resubmit that in the next round. So that'll be a November, December submission. They're also working on developing a grant application to the King Foundation for Extraction Equipment. That's long overdue. They have alternate funding sources theoretically, but this is something that would have public impact and they're going to try for grant funding on that. So that's due next week. Library had a pretty good event with the mammals of Maine at the Grange Fall, but it was lower than expected. Some of it was marketing, some of it was unexpectedly good weather day and those are numbered. And so they had about twenty five folks there. So I'm saying stockpiling is complete, went well. And then we did stockpile out back just in case. The two speed tables on Depot Street are scheduled to be constructed and the road will be closed all through traffic on Monday with no exceptions. New Balance will be creating alternate parking for their employees and we've notified dispatch because we're not going to have traffic going over those speed tables. It's overdone. We need to separate those smushing them up. Whatever.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Is there any public comment?
Here for specific something?
I didn't want, we could always circle back, so. Right on, discussion action on freedom of access. Yeah, so this is one of those things that came out of the legal training and that is the structure of freedom of access. Pricing is now limited to ten cents per page. So we had modeled what the state had kind of used back when we set that. We can't do that anymore. So it's going to be ten cents a page, which needs your approval. At the time when we did the fee schedule, the last time, we didn't have the ability to print color on legal ledger. We do now have that, so that's got a fifty cent premium to that. It, well, that's my recommendation. Return check fee of that, the bank charges us ten and then we would only get fifteen. My suggestion is increase that to thirty five. We're, we don't see too many of them, but when we do have them, it absorbs time. We're losing money on return checks at this point in time. So my recommendation would be to bump that to thirty five and then the commitment book, it used to be a CD. I don't even know if we have a CD that we could write on right now. So I recommend a USB flash drive be fifty dollars.
Is that something they would provide or we even have this far?
No, we have a stock. They're a couple bucks. Yep.
So on the top of that, ten cents per page. Whether.
Yeah, no, that's printing or copying. Theoretically, you could get everything covered under freedom of access request. Close, but we don't want to turn into a Staples Print Center. And if you want to come in and you say, I want this photocopied, then that's going to be twenty five cents. And theoretically, you could hand it over the counter and then I'm supposed to retain it. And then you could say, well, freedom of access it. So you'd wait a day if you want a freedom of access, something and just throw it over the counter. And so, I mean, we've got to be reasonable and. Yeah.
I will give this amendment. I just have a question about the title staff certificate. This was set by the state?
Yeah.
All right. No further discussion, all those in favor? Our discussion action on.
Yeah, this is Sun Auto.
They didn't find when everything else.
No.
Right now.
They approved the application to renew the application for graveyard junkyard permit. Sun Auto.
I don't think you've ever had a complaint. I've really, I've been great in the name, right? Clean operation up there. All right, so all those in favor?
All right, Elthea Spooner up on Madison Road is going to be a hundred on Saturday. And she's also been eligible for the cane since last August. And so we kind of went through our phase of looking. We've identified her with COVID, we delayed. And then my thought was that maybe the family would want to do something in conjunction with a hundredth, which they are going to, but she's a private lady. And so I sent up our replica cane. We've got a resolution from the State House. Senator Farron got that for us. I've got an arrangement of flowers going for the cane and her hundredth birthday on Friday afternoon. And the family is going to get together on Saturday. So my request here would be to approve the resolution for the Boston Post cane.
Do you approve the rest of the two for the Boston Post cane?
All those in favor? All right, discussion action on disposal of town owned property books.
So last year, we weeded, got rid of probably over a thousand books, making room on the shelves, bringing in new collections. Yeah, please, I do those in one of them. And so we had a big book sale town meeting. And it was last year. We had a big book sale. It was, it was just before COVID. Huge book sale town meeting. All that was left over ended up going to the Grange and they've been NHS, VI, the Grange have just been putting these books out to try to get them back into the community and raise a little bit of money. We're finding now that as more books come in every month, we, you have to have books go out. So we have to dispose of the town owned property the way that the town book tells us to. And that's at your discretion when it's under a certain limit. So this is under that certain limit. And it's a matter of what you folks want to do with those books. It wasn't discussed at the last meeting. Your chair is here.
I just wanted to say this, make it clear. But the library is definitely going to sell. At the end of it, the books are just going to be disposed of. Village improvement have to be sitting there and lost on the library. And we said we would take them for village improvement rather than end up with the dump. Grange and no say in any of this. Books, just all that moved to the Grange. And last week, we finally had the library sale. Books from the library and also the historical society just had their sale. We had a lot of books. For a couple of years, we merged all those in. That added some really nice books, hardcover books, you know, children's books. It wasn't nice that I could do that. A lot more. And for this one, we just like people came with little kids. Little wrote. It was nice. But I just wanted to say it's hard to get rid of books after the fact. And the choice was to dump or do a sale. VI has always been friendly to scholarship and education and improvement for the town. So their money that was realized when they made a couple hundred dollars. Somebody came in and offered to take everything that's left, twenty five dollars. At that point, I started contacting teachers that come up with the books. Contacted main extension. They got some book. Tried to take care of that one. So the next step is probably don't. Clarifies. Why we have them and why the Grange has been very nice.
Becky, what were they physically being sold by? Oh, at the Grange?
It started out, half of them, I would say, at least they have them started out. At Historical Society, went through one or two sales over there. You know how those. They were left there where we kept storing them. And then we had all these other books, which included a lot of reference and school textbooks from libraries. We merged the two together in one sale. Historical society not getting one for it. Except a couple hundred dollars. Now I could have had a thousand books. We also knocked home and got loads of books and added them. There's many money in the books.
I don't really see an issue, I guess. I, my concern is that it's done appropriately and documented correctly, so that it's.
Right, so that's why we're here. So you authorized getting rid of the books last year. But what was left from that book sale just got passed along. But we've got new books that are building up. We've got donations that we already have in the library. The library doesn't find to be of value to the collection. And so all those things that get donated, they need to be disposed of. Not thrown away, but disposed of as the town looks at it. So it's a matter of how do you want to do that?
When last time was.
Right. When the book sale was over, you take it up to recycle. Or you take it to Skills and Wannable and tear the books apart and make them out. But there's a reason why we're getting rid of them.
Ready?
So the librarian did the initial pick and then we realized that the volume of books that was getting pulled out was tremendous. And so then the library trustees came in and filtered. And the library trustees are now a part of anything that goes out of that library gets considered. And it's either, if it's shelf space and that's, you know, that's legitimate, but sometimes it's going to be antiquated information and things like that or sensitivity issues, things like that, reasons why they could go. The other thing that's coming down the pike is that we're trying to get through Sophie May. And a lot of that is historical and political, that's just outdated. And so it might be that the VI doesn't even want that. But, you know, we've got to have a process that we can just go with the next year in terms of getting rid of these books. Yeah, so in my mind, I think in some of the trustees mind, Sophie May is a high value library where the resources that are there are also high value and that we shouldn't have books of general circulation in there. And so we might have old novels that were main type, main based, main author. And then as we were in the process of moving over, they got left. And so from time to time, there's an occasional pick out of the stacks of Sophie May that will go to general circulation. And Becky's been working with Marnie, who's a specialist in books and book value to determine, you know, what's reasonable to go, what's reasonable to stay, understanding that we want that to be a valuable resource, the facility. So.
A lot of people still go there to do genealogy.
So we're closed right now. We still haven't opened up since COVID because we need to get, we have a lot of goals internally as a library board and as me being town manager to see that function of Sophie May change to take on that special historic genealogy, close partnership with historical. Because we're, it was ten to two on Wednesday and that library most likely can benefit from ten to two hours. But if we can get volunteers or friends to come in and volunteer on the weekends or whatnot, then we have real high value as the resource. But this is, Becky can speak. She's been into the materials and going through them with Marnie, but it was just a lot.
Well, I think you guys have kind of covered the bases on making sure you're getting right of getting rid of the right books and knowing what is valuable and isn't. So I mean, I've got to say that I trust the board and the people you hire to help give you valuable books after we get rid of them. So it was just a leaf, like a one I wrote up to list on these books, though.
So in my mind, this would be a continuous. We, so that we know how we're going to dispose of books. Because what's happening is we build up a hundred books. We're bringing in twenty, twenty five titles a month sometimes. And so theoretically, you got to get twenty, twenty five books out.
I just want to be clear.
Yeah. Right, I think it's good for us to have something that says this is how we're going to go until further notice.
Can we just move that authority right over to the library board as to where they are physically going through the books? Why does it need to move beyond? If they're the ones that are going through and determining what needs to go, then I think it's appropriate that they have power to say, please go. It doesn't need to come here. I don't feel.
The other thing I would say to consider with, especially for financial reasons, is if these are hardcover books and it might be an avenue that hasn't been explored yet. But I know personally for myself, just from like interior, like debris, you go online and people buy books by the color. They don't care what the book is. If you've got a hardcover book, you buy them by the lot. You buy ten books at a time and they're in shades of blue, shades of yellow, because people want them all on that and you pay like eighty bucks for ten of them. Doesn't matter what the title is. So if we have hardcover books and like the more beaten up they are, the more valuable they are. Doesn't even matter the title. So if we haven't looked at it, I mean, like that's an eBay, it's an Etsy. I mean, we have bundles of books sorted by color that have any sort of patina or anything to them. Like they're actually extremely valuable. So if we're going to take these to the dump, I think that it's worth at least like taking a couple pitches of some color sorting stuff because I think there's a gold mine sitting there. If they're hardcover and there's anything to them, like they're worth a ton of money.
Higher.
Okay, so we will move the power to the board and she wants to go in.
No, I'm just, I'm just, it is like you can, you can put them on eBay, they sell or don't sell. I mean, I'm just saying like there's, I mean, there's a lot of money in that. Like I only know because I was specifically looking for a book in color scheme in a room.
But Marty, who's on the library board, expressed his. She knows the market, she knows what's happening. So I would trust her. And if you want to get somebody who's going to sit there and take everybody, every book and look at it.
Yeah, I don't think it's in the actual book itself. It's literally the color of the book. It's not like a book. It's, it's literally blue pile, yellow pile. It has nothing to do like.
I knew that. Somebody came up to my house and the guy wondered once that he was all leather bound.
Yeah.
Physical diocese.
No, it's just her looks on a shelf, yeah.
But I wanted to say the book guy came on Saturday. Said, what will you give us? And he just went the one row and looked at it. It was one aisle of novels. And he said twenty five dollars. And that basically, like he would take it. Just wasn't worth it. I kind of trust one of these. And I had experience with books too. Well, that one's we thought were valuable with the higher prices on them. Books that Sophie May that we have found on the ground without any political thought in the mind at all. Just happens, there's a lot of work. So many novels were written about that in a few years. Will be a lot of recent politics. That's what they are. They're not nice findings or anything. You're talking about big decorating books or antique books.
Yeah, just like.
Yeah. You know, ones of value are being pulled out. In some part, we haven't, what we're pulling out, we can see it, we're keeping. Ones of value because it's an historic library. We don't need to read John Dean again or.
I mean, I really trusted the library board. As well books, I feel like that to make sure we're doing the most. So I'll make a motion, we move the authority of the disposal of the books to the library board.
Do the selection. We have to make a decision to sell the and then we can hand it over to the library board to actually handle with selling of it.
You don't have to. It's just strictly disposal. So if you want to give it away, you can give it away. If you want to try to sell them, you could say we want to try to sell them. What Matt just said was he just wants a library board to decide what they want to do.
That's fine.
Right, but Charlie's point is that this is like, we have to give the authority to dispose of that property and then let them dispose of it.
Now, that's what we're doing with the motion. Sorry.
Motion again?
Is just really literally to move the authority for the disposal of the books to the library. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
No discussion, all those in favor?
Congratulations.
Hey, perfect. Discussion action on Tiff committee recommendations. And thank you, Becky. All right, so the Tiff committee met week before last, I guess, maybe last week to review just one item, primary business, and that was to consider membership at the mid main chamber of commerce. So before then, or before today, we would be a member of Scott Higgin Regional Chamber of Commerce. Before that was the Nordwalk, naturally Nordwalk folded. And the discussion that we were having among the board was the value of the chamber, the involvement and activity of the chamber and that the mid main chamber has a bigger staff, broader scope of services, they do more for businesses. Does it come at a. Broader scope of services. They do more for businesses. Um, does it come at a. Premium price? Yes. A hundred dollars more, be a member of mid main. Um, but one of the benefits of that just in and of itself is that they put out a book. And it's at all the rest areas along the ninety-five corridor. They're in all the hotels in the area and we will then be featured in that book. And I intended to get him on your desk and I didn't, but. This is the marketing book that they've just put out. Oh, okay. All right, so this is where we would be. Uh, and then we would have at least a half a page inside specific to North Walk. You've got the map here, which would then uh have a cutout of North Walk, whether it would fit in with another community. We'd just be a separate box. Where you could have things like Wusula Park in the airport mapped out on there. Um, and then there's also opportunity for us because of the photo, photography contract that we're in the middle of uh to submit additional photographs. Uh, for exposure in this. And so in my mind, beyond just the basic benefits that they would offer our businesses, exposure for the, it's really about the exposure for the town. So it's business networking and whatnot, but you know, they really blow up business after hours, uh which is you, you actually have to apply. It's so popular uh to host. Like a cocktail hour or you could do a breakfast, like breakfast or something like that. Um, the ribbon cuttings are well attended. The members actually come. Scott Hegan did one down on Main Street um that I attended. There were probably. Half a dozen members of the business community, members of the chamber that actually came uh and that was it. And so these guys, you, you'll see two dozen people show up. Uh, they really pound pavement to recruit. So uh the Tiff committee pondered it back and forth, some hesitant, some not. Um, and the recommendation of Tiff committee was to appropriate five hundred and ten dollars out of the Tiff account for this year only. For membership of the mid main chamber.
So then businesses.
Yes, and the fee scuttle is based on the number of employees. So it starts, I think, at two hundred dollars. Um, and then they have various levels of, they'll automatically get listed on their website. As a new member, you get featured um in the. Uh, they take a full page ad once a month. It'll be featured in that. They do radio ads every month. They run a series of um spots. And they welcome the new members that way. Um, and then they've got, you know, they've got a super raffle, which wasn't in person. I don't think. The big raffle where businesses donate and you get people to go. Um, it's really the shameless self-promotion of businesses and we don't have access to that. Outside of something like this. The other good benefit is, you know, we're diving into the educational institutions, primarily Kobe uh helps us build those kind of connections.
Yeah, responsible if we vote for this. Our responsibility is the board to decide whether.
Uh, so my recommendation would be to put it into a regular budget. Uh, like with the social services, I think that's typically where we've seen any of those contributions. And that's a discussion that we'll have in another month or two about how we're gonna handle that social services. Cause it's last year, I think people just wanted to see twenty thousand dollars with a. And not have to deal with the organization. It's just say this is what it is and let the board. Divide X number of dollars as they see fit based upon the request. Just for this year.
Yeah.
Yep. The Tiff committee wants to see it if we're gonna pull it out of Tiff again next year. Yeah, they wanna pop membership, they wanna talk exposure. They wanna see, they just RFP'd this. So we're gonna be first into the brand new book. Um, and so they wanna see things like that.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Yep, uh so that's your American Rescue Plan Act uh where we're due for about three hundred and forty thousand over the course of two years. We've already received the first payment of over a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, and so there's a pretty. Limited list of what we're able to do with the funds. Um, it has to go through town meeting in order to appropriate this money. I asked about two different articles that we have about conditional grants and grants from state federal governments uh in MMA has said no. This needs legislative body approval, whether it's specific projects or whether it's going to be just appropriating the money for. Uh, spend at discretion of the board. Um, that's really gonna be your pleasure as to how you wanna word that article in March. Um, but we've got hundred and seventy now and we'll get another hundred and seventy next June or July. Um, for qualified expenses. And so my thinking was. Communicate this out to your boards and committees. Are merely your chairs, but the members would also get it. Members have ideas as to things that would potentially qualify under this. They communicate that to their chairs. The committee has a meeting, rolls up a recommendation to you folks. We are considering. Uh, well, I'd look at it. If it doesn't qualify, this doesn't qualify. Uh, and then you could look and prioritize what you think um the best use of the funds would be. In the long term, so.
When does your two years? You only, you only have two years to use the money?
Uh, end of twenty twenty-four. So a, and a lot of it's gonna be creative. So um, you know, your social distancing. Oh, you know, and see where it's, it's under part of prevention in congregant settings. Okay. Pretty much anything outdoor can be covered because you're getting people outside, any outdoor recreation, things like that could be covered on the. All matter of how can you get it to fit into the box, it's gonna pass a straight face test. Because we're gonna be subject to audit by the state. So I drafted this.
So like bleachers, so people that have better seating via outdoor activities.
Theoretically.
That I said super straight basic that was.
Right, yeah. We need to buy more bleachers because people have to sit further apart. So we need additional seating. Yeah, 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 right. It's all about, it's all about being able to.
Uh, well, there's one seventy right now.
Another hundred and seventy.
All possible things and good uses of. Use it for. So if you don't use the money, you have to go back. Excuse me?
The snow.
It must though, right? It must be.
Yes, we have to return it.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah.
If I, I figure if you don't use it, they're gonna take it back and then redistribute it to everybody else. Yeah, they're, they're gonna spend the money. So.
We just need to make sure.
It needs to be in the qualified categories and candidly, a lot of these categories are city. You know, if you had a municipal school department or. City housing, town housing. Okay, well, that would be an easy, but we don't. And three hundred thousand isn't enough to move the needle on something like that. Right, right. No, you, it needs to be something that you can come off of. Yep, so another one of the serious considerations is broadband. But I'm gonna strongly advise you against that because it's a big pool of money that's coming separately from this. It came from the feds to the state already and and even before any of the broadband money was available, we already have a company like Spector and it built out Beach Hill. So. Well, it doesn't make sense for us to put our money there right now. Correct.
Very exciting.
Yeah, but I, the, I'm gonna, I, my, my goal is to get it to every board, every committee and every employee. And if they see a need within their department, afford it up to the head and. And then we can get all the ideas on the table. That way everybody feels heard and uh, yeah, it's gonna be a priority. Are we gonna? Is a dock system or bleachers gonna take second seat to uh. Fire department, turnout gear. Okay, those are the kind of things that we have to look at. And you know, they're gonna have a strong list too. So.
Yeah.
It's really, it's not about stepping on toes, but it's a matter of using it. I think at the end of the day, what. Most intended for.
Yes.
Um, but then what might we not otherwise be able to? So if I could, just because this would be coming from you, I have a motion to send the attention, which is the cover letter plus the list of qualified expenses.
All right, discussion action on two thousand point two summer, summer property maintenance contract.
Yeah, so uh. When we signed the contract with Nickerson last year, he, we always put in that after a year's performance, we can then look and review um whether or not we would like to extend it. So he brought in this revised proposal. Last year's forty-four thousand eight hundred. This year it's forty-five thousand, so only plus two hundred. Um, and I have to tell you, they've been really responsive. Uh, we had a rough start, I'll say, and then every now and then. It put the fence of the town office and literally you send them a text message and within twenty-four hours, I've got a new piece of fencing. Um, and it's a local business, so. My recommendation would be to renew the contract for period of one year.
Second, any further discussion? It has.
Discussion action on signing of cemetery with plain deed.
This is for Deborah R. Russell for the northern half of what two sixty-four Sunset New Cemetery. We need a motion to sign.
All right, motion a second, sign the quick lane D in front of the discussion. Yeah, all those favor? Everybody? Uh, other business?
Uh, yeah, so we bid out the interior painting. I think our only bid came in ballpark forty grand. Uh, and one of the people that we had solicited at the time said, I'm just too busy, I'm just too busy. That is central main painting, Robert Boone, who lives right down here on the corner of Walt Street and Perkins. Uh, he's been in a couple of times talking about it, said he'd be interested, but he needed the way to things to calm down. So he came in last week. Uh, and went on a tour of the building. And he's offered us a price of seventy-seven hundred bucks, the double coat, everything, walls and ceilings, every room except, let's see. Back bathroom, Peter's office and the license plate closet. Everything else would get painted, whatever color we wanted. Yep, and also do the crack repairs and things like that. He's gonna patch every hole. We're gonna get everything off the wall and every hole will be patched. Uh, and then we'll just put the stuff back up where we wanna put it back up. Before we, I got it ready. Before I get a motion though. For an additional eight hundred dollars, the whole all wing is paneling. He said we could put two coats of mud onto it. Mud it, sand it, mud it, sand it and effectively turn it into something that's more like sheet rock. Uh, for the purpose of uh maintenance. He's, would be willing to do that whole back hallway and the offices for an additional hundred dollars. So the total price to do all of that would be eighty-five hundred. No, we're moving furniture to the center of the room and anything small. Uh, like he said, you know, we can do file cabinets and things like that, but our goal is to uh minimize impact on business and get everything to the center of the room.
That's a really good price.
So. Why not Peter's office?
Uh, have you seen Peter's office? He's got a lot of stuff, but.
Can't see the wall. Mine was actually done.
Just before I got here. It's a, it's a nice color. We're gonna paint the inside of his door. The doors are. Gonna get his door, but that's it. And then the play closet, it's a hot mess. It's a dead end. And then the back bathroom, we just redid that in the last two years. Boat to gray. No sense of going in there and redoing that.
Does this include the paint? Are we buying the paints?
Oh, no, no, no. This is everything.
Okay, it is everything.
Two thousand in paint materials, fifty-seven estimated labor. Oh, yeah, we will need to do that. It's a winter project.
Did you see the original bids were forty grand?
It was just about forty thousand.
Yeah. What? I remember.
Uh, so if we could have a motion to add interior painting proposal to the agenda.
Nice multiple second plan. All was your favorite? Everybody? All right, which pleasure I'll take a motion.
I will, we accept the bid from Central Main Painting to paint the interior of a building for seven thousand seven hundred dollars and then to also have the eighteen dollars for the double money. To the second half, so for a total of. Will that be eight thousand, four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars? Second.
All right, there's a motion a second uh to go with Central Main Paying there. Uh, any further discussion?
This is a good deal?
Yeah.
I was surprised.
Yeah. That's a lot of way down. That is like a lot of, there's a lot of catching and stuff like. Okay.
Paint up front.
Uh, if I have to pay, I'll probably tell him that I'd pay the materials bill. Two thousand.
I mean, I.
Cause there's gonna be margin built into the materials cost.
Right.
So if we just give the two thousand upfront, that's what he needs, then I'd be willing to do that. Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, excellent. All right. Oh, that just leaves executive session. One second, all those in favor? Oh.
Did I just have five minutes?
Five, limited to two minutes.
Okay. I just wanted to, can you give me a deep kind of a detailed update of what is going on with the. Spectrum out on the beach hill? Where it's at, where it's going?
Detailed, I can't give you. It was actually an email I'd hoped to get off my desk today, but it didn't happen. Uh. We applied for a grant to the state of Maine. We were one point off. Uh, that included Martin Stream Road. Probably if we hadn't lumped Martin Stream Road with it, we would have got it. Needless to say, Spectrum went ahead and said, we're gonna build this out anyway. So that was last. December that we didn't get the grant is probably February before they said they were gonna do it. So they have to go look at the build out of it all and it's twelve to eighteen months. So before the end of next calendar year, there should be broadband internet on Beach Hill. And I just need to know where they are in their progress. Plus, everybody's looking for construction estimates and things like that. But they're privately building out and they told me no more than twelve to eighteen months. Cause the other thing I need to follow up on is we did that Somerset broadband plan and where are we in that? Cause we're supposed to be building an application right now. Talk about our priorities.
You can't reapply for a grant?
We can. Uh, and that is gonna be a part of what we do with the Somerset County Broadband Committee or whatever that was called. Can't remember. Yeah, we can, we contributed thirty-two hundred dollars to be a part of the regional. And then what that will do is say, you know, Wilder Hill. Nobody's gonna wanna build Wilder Hill, but if you take the Smithfield section, Sand Hill and Wilder Hill makes it more feasible project. So they're gonna bridge the county gaps. Um, which is where we found value there. So um, yeah, we will, but I, nobody had any interest in Beach Hill and or Martin Street. Cause I had to send letters, certified letters to each of the potential providers and said, do you have any remote interest in this? That was a condition of the grant. Everybody said they weren't interested.
You know what we stand, huh?
No, we actually, this, their, their commitment to build out is gonna be ahead of what, you know, all this broadband money coming in, that hadn't hit yet. Um, you know, they're using internal money. It's not gonna be government related. So this will happen before any other real Connect Maine or other broadband.
Really was the best option.
Right, I just wish that we would have done that before we went through the process of the whole grant. They're just gonna build it up.
So they, they must have surveyed that value doing.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's the Beach Hill project, so it's not just gonna be Beach Hill. It's uh independent, it's George Street. It's neighborhood is how I package that.
Yeah, right.
And so once you get in there, George Street's pretty cheap to cover. It gives you that, it builds onto that density requirement.
Okay, seventy-five to seventy-five. And that, so. I walked and counted everyone.
And I think they know that they'd have a high take rate.
Oh, yeah, cause I'll be. Only game attendant. My five minutes. You had two, see?